I'm Marianne Jackson, I'm Head of Stronger Communities for North Yorkshire County Council. And myself and a member of my team, Amber Graver, will be running through the seminar with you this afternoon. So thank you to everybody for signing up. And hopefully you'll get a lot out of it. As Andy said, there will be time for questions at the end. And if we could just click on to the next slide then, Andy. So prevention matters. What we're going to run through today with you is the background to a suicide prevention and mental health funding programme that North Yorkshire County Council have been running on behalf of the NHS for the past three years. To give you some context, we'll go through some suicide data, both national and local, and a background to the funding programme and how it can be accessible to grassroots community organisations. This isn't a specialist mental health funding programme. We'll touch on what the aims of the programme are and Amber will then give you some examples of the types of projects that we've already been able to fund in years one and two of this programme. And hopefully that will give you some ideas of where your organisation might fit in and the types of projects that you might already deliver or be thinking about delivering and how you could access this additional funding for them. And then we'll go through what's available this year and how you can apply and what will make a good application for this particular fund. It's not a universal fund, it is a bit more unusual. So we're going to give you some tips and pointers on what would make a good application. And then what the next steps are if your project is successful. Okay, so next one please. Okay, a bit of background then to this particular fund. It came out of the National Suicide Prevention Strategy. And the NHS and the HSC put a lump of funding that they distributed across the country through local partnerships. So in North Yorkshire, it used to go through the STPs, the Sustainability and Development Partnerships, I think they were called. And then more recently through the Integrated Care Partnerships. So for North Yorkshire, that's Humber, Coston Vale primarily, but also the West Yorkshire ICS as well. As part of this funding around suicide prevention, they were really, really keen that an allocation was made for grassroots community activities. So this isn't commissioning specialist mental health services. It was really to, it was recognising that the role that community organisations play in actually improving and maintaining people's mental wellbeing. And that in turn will reduce the number of suicides that we're seeing across the country and across the county. And this is the final year of this programme. But for anybody who's involved in this world, they may be aware that across the county, the community mental health services are currently going through a transformation. And I am aware that there is a greater focus on places and working more closely with the voluntary sector that's coming out of that transformation programme. So it'll be interesting to see in the future whether some links can be made. And it may be that your involvement in this particular programme will set you in good stead for any opportunities that may arise in the future through this transformation of community mental health services. Next one please. Okay, I didn't want to dive straight into this, hence the brief overview, but here's some quite sobering statistics around suicides in the country. One person every ninety minutes dies by suicide in the UK. And I think what's really sobering is that two thirds of those are not in contact with mental health services. And I think that what that instantly demonstrates is that it isn't just mental health services that are going to pick these things up. Very much it's what role can communities and the organisations that we all belong to, whether that's the workplace or whether that's a local club or society, that we can play actually in reducing and reducing those horrifying figures. We also know that by far the biggest group affected by this are men. You can see on there that around three quarters of the registered suicide deaths in 2019 were among men. And to be honest, North Yorkshire doesn't book that trend. It's a very similar picture here. Next one please, Andy. Now, I'm not sure how clearly you'll see these statistics on screen. But the packs, these slides will go out in the packs to everybody if you wanted to look at them in greater detail. But what we've got there, just a couple of sets of information. One is on from 2017 on the left hand side, which is the number of suspected suicides in North Yorkshire in 2017. Now, I say suspected, the classification of deaths as suicide is quite a complex area. But these are the figures that we use in our local suicide prevention strategy and funding. You'll see there that eighty percent were male in North Yorkshire. And the age of the deceased was forty to fifty nine. So it's that that kind of middle aged group is the most at risk group. I think it's also worth noting that anxiety and depression did play a major factor in some of those deaths. And that's probably not a big surprise. But I think that's where we start seeing actually the types of activities and projects that communities can deliver. They play into those contributory factors in supporting people and improving people's general mental health and mental wellbeing. And avoiding people going into more serious illness such as depression, which can then be a contributory factor to suicide. So because we're dealing with prevention and we're really stressing that this isn't specialist services, this is about prevention. And the more we can do at the preventative end will reduce the number of people who ultimately make that decision to take their own life. On the right of this particular slide is some very recent information this year from our Growing Up in North Yorkshire survey. Now, this is something our children's services carry out with young people across the county. And we thought this was interesting because we're seeing increasing statistics and percentages of young people who are talking about that they've deliberately self harmed or thought of taking their own life. And you may be able to see, but particularly in year ten, so this is getting into the kind of mid to older teens. Twenty one percent of children this over the past twelve months reported that they'd had thoughts of taking their own life. The little table at the bottom goes through a range of percentages around how aware young people are around services that could support them, particularly around mental health. And what was really interesting to us that in both years eight and year ten, high percentages of children weren't aware of services that were available. They said they'd never heard of it. And for those that think there are services, equally, we had very low numbers of children and young people who knew how to use or access a whole range of mental health support services that were available to them. And so we've used this information to really refine the priorities of our funding programme going forward for this year. And next slide please, Andy. Okay, a bit of background to the suicide prevention funding. It started in North Yorkshire in 2019. And the government highlighted eight Sustainability and Transformation Partnerships, the precursors to the new NHS Integrated Care Partnerships. They highlighted eight across the country to receive additional funding coming out of the National Prevention Strategy. North Yorkshire accessed that funding in what was called Wave One, so that was in 2019. And that funding was to last for three years, so this is the final year. And the reason North Yorkshire were included in that is because the STP area that we belong to or part of North Yorkshire belong to had significantly high suicide numbers. But this meant that the north of the county at that time could benefit from some of this investment. So in the first year, we were able to roll a grassroots funding programme out across Hamilton, Whitby and Richmondshire. It was that particular part of the county that was covered by this STP. And this was very much a grassroots suicide prevention programme. It was aimed at smaller community groups. It wasn't about specialist services. Since then, it's expanded and we've been able to fund thirty one different initiatives across the county. And this has been a range of different types of projects. Some have been from mental health charities and they've done things like Mental Health Champions Schemes and bereavement support. But it's also been from regular mainstream charities and voluntary groups. And we've seen things like men in sheds being funded, wellbeing walks being organised, particularly with older people's groups, different training courses being made available to staff in companies and some one off events. A really, really interesting initiative by two younger people in Richmondshire, which was a music event, which Amber will give you details of later. The funding's also been used for some specialist support and we've currently got a voluntary sector partner delivering some postvention counselling. This is very specialised counselling to families and close relatives where they've been bereaved as a result of a suicide. And we've also got a project that's looking at designing with users' self harm, new self harm pathway. Next slide please, Andy. Okay, the national programme has five overarching aims and these are on screen. And these are the overarching aims that our programme has to fit into. And this is what we're required to report on back to our funders. So you'll see the first of those aims contributing to reducing loneliness and social and emotional isolation. Now, this one I think should be really accessible and very, very familiar to a lot of the organisations here this afternoon. A lot of the work that our voluntary sector undertakes in North Yorkshire is about helping people make those social connections and to ensure that people avoid being isolated or can't access services and helping to reduce loneliness. So I think this is this is an aim that when we've had applications in the past, we often see people designing their projects around this particular outcome. There's also one around changing cultures and building resilience. And some of that is through developing healthy communities and workplaces. And we've seen things like Mental Health Champions and various staff wellbeing schemes being brought on stream to make sure that mental health is something that people are willing to talk about. There's something around de-stigmatisation and this has been particularly relevant for men's groups. And this is where the men's sheds have had a massive role to play. It's given an opportunity and a space for men to come together and to quite freely and openly, without stigma, talk about their mental wellbeing. Now, as well as these five aims, we've also looked at different outcomes. When we've put our funding programmes out, we've also included some other outcomes that are trying to make this accessible to as many groups as possible. So if I could just ask Andy to click on, we should get some of our more bespoke outcomes for North Yorkshire. Okay, so there you can see again with the changing culture and resilience, also having an appropriately skilled workforce. Alongside this programme, we run a number of training activities. And partners in this programme will be able to access training for their staff and for their volunteers in anything from mental health awareness through to mental health first aid. And for those who wish to go further, we've also got access to suicide assist training programmes. Some of those providers have also gone on to train their own staff to become trainers. And this is of great interest to us. We need as many trainers as we can across the county, but we have had partners in the past, for example, North Yorkshire Sport, who have had their staff who have undertaken Train the Trainer courses. And so they are now able to deliver mental health first aid training to a range of voluntary sports clubs across the county. Okay, we'll click on for the next slide please. Sorry, the next, yes, there we go. Now, that little infographic demonstrates the five ways to wellbeing. And you can see it says, give, be active, take notice, connect and keep learning. And this particular framework is something that we really, really think that community groups can very easily design a project around and then access this particular funding stream. For those of you not familiar with the five ways to wellbeing, and they have over the years got increasingly well known, but for those who haven't come across it, it was something that was commissioned as far back as 2008 by Public Health England. And they commissioned an organisation called New Economics Foundation to research what it is in people's, that people need in their lives that has the best chance of improving or maintaining their mental health and mental wellbeing. They did a big piece of research and came up with quite a long list of different inputs into people's lives that they said had a really positive impact on people's mental wellbeing. But because nobody was ever going to remember a list of thirty different things or whatever, they then grouped them and they came up with this framework called the Five Ways to Wellbeing. Next slide please, Andy. Okay, so I've unpacked them a little bit on this slide. And I won't, I won't go through them in massive detail, but again, just if you're not familiar with them, I'll just describe the types of things that they're getting at. And hopefully that will allot for you some ideas about where your particular organisation or any projects you might have in mind fit in. So the first one is connect. And this is really about connecting with people around you, with friends, family, colleagues, neighbours, whether that's work or in your local community. And I think what this is saying is that we need those social connections. We need those personal connections in order to maintain a good state of mental wellbeing. Many of the organisations, voluntary organisations across North Yorkshire provide those spaces and places for people to meet. They provide activities. And it might be that somebody is really interested in the activity itself and they learn something new from that activity. But as well, just by being with a group of people and forming those new friendships is a really important factor in influencing, improving people's wellbeing. The next one is be active. So this is around, we know that having good physical wellbeing will have positive effects on people's mental wellbeing. So it doesn't necessarily mean formal sport, but it could. But it could also just mean going for a walk, going out, doing some gardening, using our outside spaces, whether that's on your own or whether that's with other people. And there's a project, for example, that operates in Harrogate, which was started by a young adult, a young male, who had experienced some mental health issues himself. And he started a running club. And they meet at a ridiculous hour in the morning, something about half past six, seven o'clock in the morning in Harrogate. And a group of people go for a run together through Harrogate and they form those social connections and they're staying physically active. And the guy who started it said this was the thing that got him through this particular episode of bad, poor mental health that he experienced was doing this running and he wanted to pass that on to other people. The third one of the five ways is take notice. And this picks up some of the kind of more mindfulness type activities, being out in the open air and in our natural environment and taking notice and just pausing in our busy, stressful lives and savouring the moment. Taking time to eat lunch, maybe with other people, noticing the environment around us and not rushing and dashing everywhere. So take notice is the third of the five ways. The fourth one is keep learning, keeping our minds active, learning new things, learning new skills, signing up for a course. Again, this is something that voluntary sector partners are really, really actively involved in delivering. We know that there's lots of community learning that goes on across village halls, in our libraries, in our community centres. And this is seen as a really important positive contributory factor to having good mental wellbeing. And then the final one is giving, doing something nice for a friend or a stranger, smiling at people. But I think one that's really important in this context is volunteering. The volunteering obviously helps other people or it helps our environment or whatever the volunteer activity is, it can improve the public realm, it can improve our open spaces. But the very act of giving something back has really, really positive impacts. It's believed to be one of the most positive things people can do with their spare time is to volunteer. So not only by volunteering, are people helping other people or other things, but actually it has a really positive impact on the individual themselves. And as many of the groups here will involve volunteers in the work that you do, actually, when thinking about this particular funding stream and if you've got a number of volunteers who you work with, actually understanding the positive impact on their mental wellbeing by volunteering for your organisation is actually one of the things that we will be looking for when considering applications to this fund. Okay, next slide please, Andy. Okay, we're going to go through some oops, we've gone on to the next slide. We're going to go through some of the example. It's okay, it's fine, leave it, leave it there. Of the projects funded. And I'm going to hand over to a colleague of mine, Amber, to go through some of the detail of that. And just a couple of headlines. We've spent over one hundred and twenty five thousand thus far on the programme in North Yorkshire. And there has been a whole range of different types of activities. And some of those have been more specialist, some of them being very universal. What we've got this afternoon are just some of those projects. There, I think there are thirty one different projects in total. And if anybody is interested, there is a full compendium that Amber's prepared of those projects. And I'm sure she'd be more than happy to share that with anybody who wanted to see more detail. But I'll hand over to Amber now and she'll go through some of the case studies with you.
Thanks, Marianne. Hi everyone. Yeah, I have the pleasure of talking you through some of the projects that we supported over the last two years. So I work with our providers on a sort of one on one day to day basis in some cases. I'm sort of the port of call for any issues, questions, achievements, changes, ideas. And over the last couple of years, we have seen some wonderful projects come through the programme. And there's so much I could say, but the time is limited. So I'm just going to highlight a few projects. Marianne's already mentioned some of the different types that we have funded. We've got one on one counselling, bereavement support, group support, men in sheds, wellbeing and Zen gardens in schools, music events, we've got mental health champion schemes, wellbeing cafes, befriending models. Then we've also got training and various outdoor activities. So it's a big range from the more clinical interventions to much lower level support booths really. So on this slide, I've brought three example projects. And you might have been able to skim through those whilst they've been up on the screen, but if not, that's okay. In yellow, you can see some of the context of the projects. Sort of from experienced mental health providers delivering drop in sessions at GP surgeries to those that have never had to delve into mental health or wellbeing at all before, but due to bereavement in this case, have sort of stepped into action. So you can see that the Wentzdale School, very sadly, they were they lost their head boy to suicide back in 2019. And that's when they got in touch with us. And so just in the interest of time, if you could, Andy, if we could click, there should be two blue flying boxes. You might have to click again. And then, yeah, perfect. Thank you. So those just show you some of the journeys that these two providers have been on at least from sort of never applying to the fund before or being rejected in the first instance and then us working with the providers. And so whilst you're perhaps reading through those, I did want to on this slide just sort of bring up the North Allerton Business Network, just because they kind of came out of nowhere in terms of experience of applying to the fund or funding of this nature at least, fulfilling monitoring requirements, working with a local authority. The network was established back in 2013 to provide opportunities for sole traders, self-employed and individuals from small businesses to meet and share and learn from each other. And historically, they had arranged presentations for members on practical issues. So things like online tax returns, raising finance, marketing, social media. They'd never sort of delved into mental health or wellbeing of members. But then they came across this fund and they sort of saw an opportunity to support the members in a completely different way. And they sort of realised that actually one of the core reasons that they did meet was really to provide an opportunity to discuss and resolve issues and remove some of the isolation that some employers and employees, particularly those who were working from home at the time, sometimes feel. So the lead contact Jill, she applied back in 2019 with a great, but to be honest, slightly woolly idea. It kind of started up with a discussion around identifying and recognising causes for stress in the workplace. And then through lots of conversations, particularly with Marianne and Jill, right at the start, we worked on the application form and built in offering practical tips on managing stress, setting up workshops and they ran with that. So we had workshops in yoga and reducing sleeplessness, managing anxiety. And around halfway through that project, Jill actually felt quite ill and she was in hospital. But once the network had delved into this work, they didn't want to stop. So we had quite a lot of conversations with them in terms of how to continue in that project. But they were so motivated. And there's a team around them that just got involved, jumped in and with a bit of handholding, they set up a networking event instead of networking. And so building on those five ways to wellbeing that Marianne just highlighted. And that's now become an annual event, which is great. They also managed to pull in training for any members that wanted it in suicide first aid. And also linked up with the loneliness campaign, which was very relevant at the time of this funding, at least in North Yorkshire. And in the end, around sixty businesses were engaged in sort of mental wellbeing support events, receiving information that they never had before. And what was really key to that particular organisation was sort of using that framework of the five ways to wellbeing, because they'd never really heard of it, never engaged in it. And it was quite a revelation to them in terms of how they engaged and supported members. And they did feel much stronger for it. And not only on a mental health and wellbeing level, but through the project, they, for the first time, they also were able to connect with other local community groups, which is something they wanted to do for years. And they sort of worked into their application form, funding set aside for digital media, which allowed them to connect with organisations online. And then those relationships were nurtured. And the reason I picked that one out, because there's so many, I just thought it showed the layers in which the programme sort of supported that organisation to then go on to support a cohort of people. And we were with them every step of the way from the application guidance, reshuffling plans, making connections, following up, including them in wider opportunities. And it was just amazing to see what they were able to deliver in that space, that time of the year. And now I'm aware I'm taking up loads of time, so I'll whizz through the next slide if we can, Andy, please. Thank you. Again, I've given another three example projects and hopefully you can read more about them after the seminar. But in short, again, I'll pick out an example, but I wanted to mention Jewletree. So these were twins, we worked with them, they were So these were twins, we worked with them, they were incredibly passionate about music and events. That was what they did in their day-to-day life jobs. But they were actually bereaved by suicide, it was one of their close friends. And they came to us and they just wanted to do something. They, they had no idea how to do any, any of this stuff in terms of funding, the governance involved, insurance, bank accounts, all of that. And we supported them from the start, right throughout. And they put on some amazing events where they brought together bands and poets and performers, whilst also incorporating a load of mental health and wellbeing booths. So they had drop-in therapy sessions and mindfulness activities, which just engaged people in a different way. So it definitely didn't feel clinical, it was just sort of, they weaved it in, which is, which is great. And also on there is the Clovo Trust. Again, another, another one that kind of came out of the blue for us. They are based in Richmondshire and work with particular communities, one of which is veterans. So they have applied to set up some workshops that some veterans could come to and do some woodwork whilst their wives went on to do some kind of sewing. And it just brought, brought different people together. And there, and I actually went to visit them recently, which was really, really great. And then Heriot Hospice, I wanted to pull them up just because they're very different to North Allerton Business Network in that they're quite experienced in this area of work. They applied back in 2019 and since then, they've been funded in every round of this prevention programme. And we've gone on to work with them very closely on setting up a number of programmes now in self-harm and postvention. So quite specialist services. But it all started back with this grassroots funding programme. They worked with young people through bereavement counselling. And out of 14 young people that were referred to them, three had expressed suicidal ideation themselves and three had been affected by bereavement directly. So they worked with those individuals and we supported them from the start. And then also through COVID, we supported them on a different level in terms of that transition from face-to-face delivery to online work. All the safeguarding policies, training up staff and volunteers, investing in technology. And basically, in short, it just meant that working relationship, it just meant that they were able to still take on referrals, the service continues to run. It's free, it's available for young people and it is the only dedicated bereavement support service for young people in North Yorkshire, which I think is really powerful. And yeah, Heriot's journey has been really exciting for us because they massively have stepped up to the plate and put themselves forward for every opportunity they feel appropriately equipped to deliver. And we do have a huge confidence in their ability based on how they perform when, when they first made contact. And it just shows, yeah, there's, there's so many opportunities from funding programmes like this. And I am whizzing through, but if we can click on to the next slide, there's just some photos. Oh, sorry, I completely forgot about those. But I've, I've sort of, yeah, I've, I've talked through those, that's absolutely fine if we go on the next slide. Yeah, so these are just some photos and then I'll pass you back to Marianne. I just pulled them out to represent some of the diversity involved, again, from young people who are now peer mentors and counsellors on the phones. We've got staff from mine, a picture from one of the music events. And the group in the bottom right, they were a cohort that took on the Three Peaks Challenge. And then that top right one is a picture of the workshop for the Clovo Trust and the veterans, that was them building their space for the woodworks. So yeah, again, hopefully just show some diversity of what the programme supports in communities. And just because there is this big suicide prevention title doesn't mean grassroots organisations or organisations that in the past have had no involvement in mental health or suicide. It doesn't mean that you're ineligible for this and there's actually lots of opportunities. So hopefully that has helped you to see some of the things that we are working on. But I will pass you back to Marianne as I've taken up lots of that time. But yeah, that's, that's me.
Thanks so much, Amber. Amber does all the monitoring and evaluation of this programme. And so she knows in absolute detail these individual stories. And as I say, we have got a full written-up compendium of all these particular projects. If people are interested in seeing it, it might inspire you to think about what your organisation might want to undertake. Okay, next one please, Andy. Right, I'm going to now go into an overview of this year's funds and how to apply. So if we click on. Okay, we're currently preparing to launch a new round of funding. This actually goes live tomorrow. So you've got in first kind of view of it, a sneak preview of the funding that will go live tomorrow. There's about, just around £200,000 budget in total. But this does extend beyond North Yorkshire because this particular year, the Stronger Communities Programme have been asked by the Humber Coast and Vale ICS if we will administer their grassroots funding for the whole of their footprint. So it does extend into the cities of York and Hull and also North and East Lincolnshire and East Riding. We've also got funding from West Yorkshire and this will particularly fund projects in Harrogate and Craven districts. As I say, it goes live tomorrow, grants of up to £5,000 will be available. Now, that, that doesn't sound like we'll be able to fund many projects. But actually, what we found in the past is that very often the grassroots applications that come in are far, far lower than £5,000. You know, routinely they're kind of around £2,000 or less. It's very few who actually come in and apply for the full £5,000. And although we, we don't tend to accept applications of less than 500, there's usually different ways that those can be funded. And I think the other thing to say is because it's administered through stronger communities, if we don't think your idea really fits this particular funding, but we still think it's a great project, because we run another, a number of other funding programmes, what we can do is signpost you into some of those other funding programmes. For example, the Stronger Communities Inspire Fund, we've been able to direct people in. So we wouldn't just turn you down, we'd try and find another solution for your particular project. The application forms and guidance, as it says on screen, will be available either on the county council website or by emailing the stronger dot communities email address, which is on the slide. Next one. Okay, we mentioned right at the beginning that the by far the biggest affected group in our population are middle-aged men. And that, that continues to be the case. However, in this final round, we, we talked to the ICSs and said, are there any other emerging priority groups who you'd like us to have a special focus on? And there were. And what they identified in the Humber Coast and Vale area, so that's everywhere in North Yorkshire, that isn't Harrogate or Craven. Young people, women and families were a priority. And for the, for the Scarborough Borough area, it is likely that we've, we'll have some additional funding for any projects that are particularly around young people. We've got another funding stream from the Department for Education that we may be able to top up the budget for the Scarborough area. It is just for that particular area. And in Harrogate and Craven, the West Yorkshire ICS said they're particularly keen to address issues of rurality, which makes it difficult for people to access services. Again, children and families and particularly new parents. The farming community was an area of concern for that particular ICS area, Harrogate and Craven area. And also the Asian community, I think particularly in the market town of Skipton, they would be keen to see projects around. Next slide please. And the next. Okay, so things to look out for when you're making an application. What you see on screen is just a few excerpts from our guidance. The guidance is actually quite substantial. It's there to help. It gives some background to the programme, it goes through the outcomes. And then there's some really clear step-by-step guidance on how to fill the form in. And we really, really stress, it is really helpful if you, if you read the guidance and use that when you're filling in the form. So what I've just pulled out here are just some highlights of that and some particular things to look out for. Now, I've got some flying things coming in in yellow boxes. So if I could ask you, Andy, just to click one and we should get one that flies in. Okay, yeah. So will it, will your project meet the funding aims? So if you remember right at the beginning, we went through what those five main funding aims. The first one was around loneliness and social isolation, for example. You need to make sure that your project, you can actually align it to one or more of those funding aims. You don't need to tick all five. We often get people ticking all five. And, and it's like, just, just actually pick the ones that are most appropriate for your project. Click again, please, Andy. And read through any guidance notes given across the documentation. We do specify particular things when you're filling in the application form, what you need to be including in those sections. And there are word counts on there. So just make sure that you follow those. The application form's not difficult, it is a fairly standard application form. So hopefully people won't have problems filling it in. But if you do, Amber is always on hand to help people and go through it with you. And click again. Are you eligible? You should be. We, we, we don't preclude anybody really in applying for this fund. There were a couple of caveats on that. So any, any registered charity, any voluntary sector organisation, even new organisations, provided you can work with another organisation who will be your accountable body. We are very open to who can apply for this fund. It includes schools, it includes faith groups, providing it isn't about the faith, but it is about a universal project. And some commercial organisations can also apply, again, providing that the project isn't designed to make a profit. So it's unlikely that you won't be eligible. But if you've got any doubts, again, just check with us before putting pen to paper or, or fingers to keyboard, because we don't want to waste your time. And click again, please, Andy. Check what you can spend the funds on. What, what we don't want to see is somebody filling lots and lots of information on application form. But what they actually want to use the funding for is an eligible expenditure and it isn't an eligible activity. So within the guidance that you'll get, if you want to apply, it will go through the types of things that the funds can be used for and importantly, what it can't be used for and the types of expenditure that you can include in your application. And click again. Also check the funding and that the sums add up. And very often we get applications where they're applying for more than the maximum available under the fund or they are applying for the amount under the fund, but the project costs far in, are far in excess of that. And it is really unclear how the project is going to be funded. So just make sure that your project plan and expenditure fits the criteria, fits the maximum available and that you give us a clear financial profile on how you're going to fund the project if it's bigger than the £5,000. And last click. And we also ask for supplementary information. And it's really important that you, that you send this into us alongside your application forms and particularly things around safeguarding procedures, data protection procedures, that type of thing. There is a checklist at the back of the form. So just before you submit it, just go through that and make sure you've given us everything that's required for you to be eligible. And next slide please, Andy. And I think you might have to click again. Okay, what's coming up on screen now is actually taken from our scoring metrics. When all the applications come in, a panel meets to go through them and assess them. And they're scored against some criteria. So what you see there are the different things that we will be looking for on your applications. And very often, the bits that are less well-filled in around the need for the project, collaboration and monitoring. Now, you might just need to click on two or three times, Andy. And one more, that's great. Okay, so what do we mean by clear identified and well-evidenced need? What we don't need you to do is go through national data sets and national research and information. We, we, we've got that, we take that as read. But what would be really interesting to see is any local research or local knowledge that you've brought to bear in putting the application forward. So by that, I mean things like, are there any gaps in your community? So for example, if your project's for a men's shed and there are five others within a mile of where you're based, it's unlikely that would be successful. But having some information on the form as to what is available in that community and what the gaps might be and any information you have, understanding what the need for the project is. That's the sort of thing we're looking for here. So it doesn't need to be lots and lots of statistics or ONS figures. But it's, what we're looking for is what have you done? What's your understanding of your community and what it needs, any gaps that are there? And why your project will, will help meet some of those needs. We're also looking for collaborative work. And so when we're thinking about collaboration, sometimes people just say we work with and then put a list of different organisations. That doesn't really tell us anything and that wouldn't score very highly on our evaluation scoring criteria. So the type of thing we are looking for there is where you have worked with others. Describe how you've done it. Describe the types of projects that you've worked on together. Describe how they might be involved in this particular project. Now, for some of you, it might be that you're not used to collaborating, that, that you haven't done that in the past. But there is an opportunity here to say, we would like to work with and, and this is how we would like to work with another organisation in your community. Or it may be with the GP practice, for example, or with a local business. And go into some detail about how that collaboration would work, rather than just saying we work with A, B and C, because that doesn't, that doesn't really score very highly. We're looking for more detail in that section. And the one I think that's probably exercises most of our minds is around monitoring. What we're not looking for is lots and lots of formal tools. I know some people use things like Edinburgh Warwick and other wellbeing tools. And we're not just looking for numbers of beneficiaries or numbers of people involved. What we'd like to see here is how are you going to evaluate? How will you know that you've run a good project? And that qualitative information, the stories of people who've been involved in the project, writing case studies of where people have been able to describe how this project's improved their lives. Or more volunteers have had training around mental health awareness or mental health first aid. That's the type of information that we're looking for. It isn't just about numbers, it isn't, you know, we will tell you how many people came to our events. It's actually, and what difference did that project make on their lives? And we need to see some of your plans around how you're going to collect that qualitative data. And next one please, Andy. How to apply, as I've said, it must be done on the application form and you can get those from our mailbox. The application's open tomorrow and they run through the month of October. As I say, it's a relatively straightforward application form. If you get it and there's anything that puzzles you, you can get in contact with us or in contact with Amber directly. And then the final slide. We've had 31 different partners on this programme so far. And I've put there, you become part of a community of interest. I did, of course, mean a community of practice. But what this means is you get included on our mailing list unless you opt out of that. And you will get first notice of any training that's become available. We can give you access to other mental health resources that are available to your organisation. Your staff, your volunteers, such as the Champion Health Mental Health Training Programme. Um, you will get random emails from Amber from time to time, letting you know about different events. And different resources that may become available, so it's great, we've got this growing community of practice of non-specialist. Organisations across North Yorkshire who are really contributing to this particular, um, suicide prevention strategy. And I will stop there, um, and leave at least a few minutes for some questions.
Thank you, Marianne, um. I think we've had, I don't know if you've seen while you've been doing your presentation, we've had a few questions come through. Um, Amber's been super efficient and, and cracked on and, and answered a few of those, so. For anybody that may not have seen or noticed that happening whilst the presentation was taking place. Um, feel free to take a look now, but we will also be sending out the script of, of the questions and answers, so anybody that's, that's. Attended today will, will be able to look back at this. Um, and see those, I don't think we need to necessarily go over those, um, unless Amber or yourself wants to add anything extra. Um, but the floor, like you say, is now open, we've got a few minutes left, so if anybody else. Has any questions that you'd like to, to ask, um, please go ahead and I'll, I'll try and read those out. So I'll give people a few moments. Uh, Walter, did you have a question? Let me just try and unmute you.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Yeah.
Um. I am involved with trustee of York, York Neighbours. Uh, so we're dealing with the sixty-five-year-olds plus. And one of the big issues is loneliness, isolation and so on, because we deal. With mainly individuals. Of many of whom are housebound. And, I mean, we've put in for our own volunteers, put in training for mental health training and so on. Um, but just to give you a sense of numbers, so you, you understand what we're talking about. Um, one of the things we do is to give phone calls to people, okay? Um, so in, in August, we made three hundred and fifty-seven calls to two hundred and. Uh, thirty of our neighbours, we have, um. Nearly five hundred people who are registered with us and so on. Now, you know, this is an ongoing programme started about five years ago, we are a charity. Um, and we're, you know, we need resources all the time, as everybody else does. So does this sort of setup, doesn't meet your age criteria? In other words, you concentrate mainly on the young, well, middle aged, this is, you know, the over sixty-fives. But who are equally, uh, at risk of mental health problems. Um, do you provide sort of supportive funding for that?
Um. In the past, it, it, we've had a focus around that kind of middle-aged men. Um, but what we, when we specifically asked Humber Coast and Vale, um, the funders, um, this year, they, they actually said everybody. Um, we said, we need some priorities and they said, it's everybody. I think what we've seen through the pandemic is the impact on people's mental health and particularly older people. Who very often live in lone households. Um, so they don't, they're not living with families and they're having, you know, their social connections have been drastically reduced over the last eighteen months. Um, so yeah, it, it, certainly this round, um, I think you said you were in the city of York?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, um, and because we're covering the whole of the Humber Coast and Vale area, then, um, you would be, it, it. Although we're North Yorkshire County Council, we are covering for the city of York as well, so yes. Your group would be eligible for this particular fund this time.
Right, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, thank.